I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular board meeting, February 6, 2007, 5:30 PM, Administration Building, 1900 Price Road. Please rise for a moment of silence, followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
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 Thank you.
Moving on to item four, roll call. Mrs. Galván calls. She will not be in today. All other board members are present. Moving on to item five, recommend approving the agenda of the regular board meeting, February 6, 2007, with any corrections. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo, members of the board. There's a few corrections. Under conference presentation, item number five will not be addressed in tonight's board meeting. That's item number five under conference presentation. Also, under closed meeting, section eight, items eight, eight, and 10 will not be discussed at tonight's board meeting. They have been pulled. We've settled. Okay? Also, under consent agenda, item number 17, pages 049 will be replaced with page 049A, and I believe you have that in front of you. And the recommendation should read, to reflect the official agenda, recommend approval to purchase internal connections through the Department of Information, Resource, State of Texas to several vendors or other approved state vendors. We'll get that into the minutes.
Any other corrections?
And then, under closed meeting, personnel matters, item number 34, page 182 will be replaced with page 182A, and you have that. That's it.
Do you have a motion to approve the agenda as read? Motion by Mr. Aguilar, second by Mr. Powers, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item six, superintendent's report, a conference presentation, one, 2006, 2007 state catch champion award. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo, members of the board. I'll call on Ms. Berta Peña to introduce this presentation. Ms. Peña.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Mr. Escobedo, members of the board, one of our very own has been recognized by the state of Texas Education Agency, and deservedly will be presented with a plaque by Mr. Armando Lopez, a regional catch director. And, Mr. Gonzalez, and on behalf of the board and administration, we would also like to present her with an award and a presentation.
Okay. I said, I'm Armando Lopez, and I'd like to begin by reading a letter from our program catch director, Peter Crib, that he sent to Mr. Gonzalez. Congratulations on being at Brownsville Independent School District, continuing its progress towards implementing coordinated school health, utilizing a coordinated approach to child health, which is a catch program. Over the years, my staff and I have enjoyed working with your teachers, child nutrition personnel, PE specialists, and administrators. I want to take this opportunity to inform you that the University of Texas catch team recently selected Liz Avitia as a catch champion of 2006. Ms. Avitia has been recognized for her untiring dedication to create healthy environments for the children in Texas. On November 30, 2006, in Dallas-Forth Worth, we recognized eight catch champions at the school, school districts, and community level. Ms. Avitia was one of them. The catch team is impressed with Ms. Avitia's commitment and passion towards improvement of school health. Finally, I would like to extend my appreciation to Ms. Avitia's hard work and dedication to helping children develop healthy habits. I look forward to continuing my association with Ms. Avitia and with the Brownsville Independent School District. That's from our program director, Peter Crib. I would also like to add several things that have made Brownsville Independent School District a model district throughout the whole state. We've used this district to, for our trainings, catch trainings throughout the whole state. We've also, TEA has also created educational videos that show how to implement catch throughout the whole state. The model district that Liz has created, creating a catch district team, is going to be implemented also in the Austin Independent School District starting this year. Some of the things that Liz created here, and I'll try and be as brief as possible, is she created a program called Catch Bucks, simple money for Brownsville Independent School Elementary children to use to be healthy, to have healthy habits throughout the day. She also incorporated the police department by having the police officers go to their cafeterias and eat with the kids, and also walk with the kids throughout the years. She has also been instrumental in creating the Catch Kickoff that happened in 2004, where we had over 600 students and parents attend for this very important coordination effort. She created the Catch Awards, where she awards the Catch School of the Year every year. And last year, she also went ahead and created Catch Educator, Catch PE Specialist, and Catch Food Service Manager. It is with all my pleasure to recognize Liz Avitia as a catch champion of 2006 for the state of Texas.
Ms. Avitia, before you do your remarks, I'd like to call on Dr. Escobedo to step down. In behalf of the district, we also have a little token of your outstanding work and achievements in the district.
Dr. Escobedo, Mr. Gonzalez, members of the board, administration, thank you so much. I feel so honored, but actually, I'm doing what I'm very passionate about, and that's to educate children. And this is something that I've been doing for a while, and I really just enjoy, I could say, having fun doing this. And it is my job, and I just feel so honored that, you know, that I was recognized for something that I enjoy doing. So, it is truly an honor to have been honored by the school district as well as the catch people. Thank you very much. I also would like to have my catch team, I don't know if all of them are here, but I'm going to ask to please stand, members of my catch team. Okay, there's another one over there.[466.12][466.12](applause) I want to share this award with them because, you know, they help me, they support me. We gather quite often to share some of our ideas and brainstorm what we're going to do next. It's not a very easy initiative, you know, teaching everyone how to stay healthy. It's difficult, and it's a new trend, and we're hoping that as we go along doing all the things that we need to implement, that we're going to see a change, a change in our students, our staff, and our parents. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Avitia.
I want to say just very briefly, in reference to the catch program, I'm personally very proud of it. I'm sure our whole entire district is. We have actually incorporated the catch program in a medical curriculum, and we bring interns and physicians down to Brownsville, to BISD, to observe the catch program, learn about it. And at the end of the rotation, virtually every intern and physician specifically addressed catch program as being one of the items on the rotation that has impressed them the most. So, again, congratulations to the entire team, the catch team, and hopefully, you'll keep doing what you've been doing, because you're doing very well. Any other comments from the board? If not, we move on to item two, 2005, 2006 Academic Excellence Indicator System District and Campus Report. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo, members of the board. This is the report that we always present to the board and the community concerning how we're doing in our schools. And to introduce this report and do the presentation is Ms. Berta Peña. Ms. Peña.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Escobedo, members of the board. This is a required presentation by the Texas Education Agency. And at this time, Mr. Raoul Vázquez and Ben Estrada will be making the presentation for the public, for administration, and for the board.
Dr. Escobedo, Mr. Gonzalez, board members. Each board member received a CD containing the ACIT, which is the Academic Excellence Indicator System. The ACIT pulls together a wide range of information on the performance of the students in each school and district in Texas every year. The information available on the ACIT includes and is not limited to tax results by subject, by special groups, and all student tested, SDAA participation, ethnicity, and economically disadvantaged information, annual dropout rates, attendance rates, completion rates for the school district, and by campus, accountability rates, and district demographics. Performance of these indicators and many others are segregated by ethnicity, sex, special populations, and low-income status. The high level of detail in the ACIT is made possible by the extensive amount of data collected through the Public Educational Information System, RPIMs. Each of your CDs contains district, state, and regional data, as well as individual campus data. A summary of the key points for the district also includes student demographics, a personnel profile, budget reports, disciplinary reports, and other information. A detailed presentation of the summary pages at the beginning of each CD will be presented at the next DEIC meeting, Monday, February 12, 2006, which is something that we have to do to meet the requirements. Additional copies of this CD will be distributed to each campus, our public information office, our local libraries, and the information, as you have found in your CDs, will be posted on the website. Are there any questions concerning any information on the CDs?
Questions, comments from the board?
Dr. Escobedo. Is Mr. Estrada going to explain the report in detail, Mr. Vázquez?
I can go ahead and explain. I have, we have it in detail, sir, right? We have it in the first section. Okay? Go ahead and put up the first page there, Ben. On the first page, you will find that is in your CDs, you will see that all the campuses with enrollment counts are listed, and it shows you the number of campuses and all this percentage of students that are there by size. The next one shows all campuses by type of campuses that this district has, high schools, middle schools, elementaries, alternative settings, and then you have Lincoln Park, JJIP, BLA, and BAC. And you have the breakdowns of how many students, how many campuses, and the percentage of students that are there. The next one sits on your front pages there, the students by ethnicity and enrollment status. It always compares 2004 to 2004, 2005 to 2005, 2006. And then, at the very end, it shows a change on the percentages from 2005. Then, the other next is the students by grade span. It tells you how many students we have either in kindergarten or, excuse me, earlier status, and it gives you, again, 2004, 2005, 2005, 2006, and it tells you whether we've gained or lost students in those particular grade levels in the year. The students by program. Here, again, it breaks it down by special ed, bilingual, career, technology, and gifted and talented. It gives you how many students, the number of students that we have in that program. Again, it gives you an idea of whether we've had gains or losses from the two previous years. The next one talks about the tax met standards, and this is a summary, and it breaks it down by all students, African-Americans, Hispanics, whites, and economically disadvantaged. And then, it gives you what is reading, writing, math, science, social studies, BISD, region one, and all the states, so we can compare ourselves to how we did with the region and how we did with the state. The next one, it talks about the students that met standards, and this is summary for all tests, and it indicates special groups. So, again, here, we're talking about male, female, special education, LEPS students, and at-risk students. And it gives you a breakdown by the subject areas. In 2006, the tax, the tax I and the SDAA, total participation rates. Those tests were given, and all it counts for our AYP purposes is for total participation rates. On the 2006, you have another breakdown, and the first one, it showed you by district, by region, by state. The next breakdown gives it to us tested, actual subjects, mobility, absent, ARDs, LEPS exemptions, and others. In other words, they're breaking it down by district, by region, by state, so that we can get a better perspective as to how many students we actually tested in those special population areas. On the graduation rate, the graduation rate for 2006 is calculated by the graduation rate of 2005. It's always a year behind. Here, it gives you a breakdown of how many students graduated by ethnicity, by special education, and regular education. The graduation types. It also gives you minimum high school program, recommended high school program, and any distinguished programs that we might have. Again, here, you have the number of students, and you have the percentages of the students that fall in there, and it gives you the total special education population that graduated on that particular year of 2005. The college admission. This is a breakdown for our students by ethnicity, again, by BISD. It gives you how many of those went to college, how many were tested, what was the mean SAT test and ACT test, and it compares us, again, with the region and with the state. On the attendance rate, this is, again, 2004, 2005, we have it broken down by special populations, district, region, and state. The completion rate of students for 2005, graduated, received GED, continued in high school, and dropped out after four years. You have to remember that under AYP, you take into consideration the fact that if you come in as a ninth grader, they are going to calculate to see if you graduated within four years. And, again, here, it is broken down by ethnicity within the district, as the district, as the region, and as state, and then it breaks it down by ethnicity and special populations that we have. The 2004, 2005 dropout, again, we're a year behind, breaks it down the same way, and it gives you a percentage of how we increased or decreased from the previous year on that area there. The next one page gives you a breakdown of the accountability rating of the schools. Here, you have all the ratings of our schools, and how the elementaries and the secondaries came out last year. The campus ratings, again, here, it gives you a total by how many we had exemplary, recognized, acceptable, unacceptable, and not rated. And you can see that the alternative education schools are all put together at the bottom of that page. The district staff by category. Here, again, this is the district demographics. It gives you a breakdown of how many teachers, how many campus administrators, how many central administrators, how many professional staff we have, how many paraprofessionals we have in our school, how many auxiliary staff members we have. In Brownsville, there's a total of 6,807.6 individuals that work for the school district. The teacher profile. Again, here, it gives you a breakdown of gender and ethnicity, breaking down there. And then, it also gives you a breakdown of teacher's highest degree field. It will tell you how many have a bachelor's, a master's, and a doctor's degree in this school district. The next page deals with budget revenues for all funds. Again, this is something that the state looks at, and it provides a little graph on the bottom. It shows you how much money we receive from the local, from the state, from the feds, and other sources, and a total budget for that particular year in place. The next page is the budget expenditures, and it goes down and puts down all the calendar year of 2005, 2006, how all the monies were used this particular year within the district itself, not only in percentages, but also in actual amounts. And then, it gives you a breakdown of how much the total expenditure per pupil was used in that particular year, and other expenditures per pupil that were used, and this is subject to 61-00, 64-00 only for that particular thing. The disciplinary referrals and reasons for students were removed to an alternative setting. It breaks it down by high school, middle schools, and elementaries, and it breaks it down, and it gives you an explanation on the bottom, which you have in your CDs, as to the reasons why they were removed to those campuses. And removal from regular campuses, again, you have another breakdown. It tells you how many went to JJIP, AEP, suspension in school, placed in AEP, or removed to other campuses for some reason, for their infractions. Violations involve procedures. There is BID Emergency Critical Response Plan. It tells you whether this was a class control, immediate threat to injuries and stuff in the classroom. And the last one is violent prevention programs that we have in place within this school district. The rest of the CDs contain an individual breakdown by campus. You will see in your CDs that they have a little profile on how the campus want to talk about themselves, and then it gives them the same breakdown that you have here for each individual campus.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Aguilar, did I answer your question?
Yes, sir. And if, am I, let me give some comments. Thank you, Raoul, Mr. Vázquez, for providing us that report. Now, that report sent to us by the state has a lot of information that is going to help us as a district. Even though the science scores are low and the math scores are low, I look over the high schools. I think if you look, the most important thing is there was an improvement in those scores. In some cases, up to 15 points. So, to us, even though the public might look at it as being low in math and science, we should look at that there was an improvement made from one year to the other. There's good stuff also in the tests that our young people take to go to college, SAT and ACT. Good information is that our school district scored higher than the district, not the district, I mean, region one, you see? So, that was real good, the ACT. Also, the SAT scores were within 40, 50 points away from the state average. So, definitely, there are good things in this report that our school district should be proud of, and there's improvement in there. And, again, what's good also, there's some things of concern that we need to look at. One item was the dropout, when Mr. Vázquez explained the difference between the annual report and tax. Yes, we need to look at it. I believe that we, our district was the highest dropout than the region, region one. So, we need to look into those things. The other thing that I looked at in the discipline, we have a school that has 2,100 students, and there are 2,365 total cases of discipline problems that are out in the classroom. So, you look at it and say, my goodness, how much instruction is going on versus the number of students? What I'm saying is, it is a good report for all of us to look at. Just there's good things, there's some areas of concern that we need to start looking at it. So, thank you, Mr. Vázquez, and let's thank our principals for seeing that improvement in our scores. At least, we show that we're gaining, they're conscious of the problem that we have, and they're working at it.
Excellent points. Any other comments from the board? Moving on to item three, Down by the Border Fall Festival. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo, members of the board. This is a festival that was done in October of 2028 of 2006, and very important, and I'll let Ms. Mount files, because she knows more about it than anybody else, introduce this. Ms. Mount files.
Dr. Escobedo, Mr. Gonzalez, members of the board. Mr. Rendon is our special programs administrator, and he has the presentation. Mr. Renzo.
Good afternoon, Dr. Escobedo, members of the board, Mr. Gonzalez, our superintendent. I'd just like to acknowledge a very special group of people that put together its first annual Down by the Border Fall Festival this past October 28. This was a community awareness event held in conjunction with Valley Baptist Medical Center, Brownsville, and UTB TSC in partnership with the Brownsville Independent School District. I'd like to really emphasize that this project, this event, was really the brainchild of Mr. and Ms. Serhiel Sarata. They were very instrumental in formulating and developing the event that took several months of planning. It was no doubt a tremendous effort to see it through its fruitation. On behalf of the Special Services Department, we are very grateful and honored to have been a part of this very special event. This time, I would like to recognize or to ask any staff member or parents that are present to please stand and be recognized. I know there's some people here from my department that are here. We have, we have, we have Ramiro Trevino, who's a special ed supervisor. We have Estela Flores, she's a special ed counselor. Kathleen Jimenez, who's also a supervisor in our department, not present, but very instrumental in this project, was Domingo Torres, who was one of our parent advisor, and also Dr. Begir Rendon. I haven't seen her here, but she played a very monumental role in assisting in this event. Again, on behalf of our department, we felt very grateful and honored to have been part of this very special event. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Again, thank you, sir. Again, a very excellent event that I'm glad that took place. Hopefully, we can have them on a more regular basis. I actually spoke with Mr. and Mrs. Sarata a few days ago, and I didn't realize that actually they were going to be on the agenda today. So, again, thank you. Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to go ahead and state that we were there. We were part of it. Mr. Aguilar and myself were part of the Ordine Alambra's, and that's one of our civic duties that we do for special needs children. And we attended that. We got there by 8:30, and we were supposed to help, but you have so many volunteers, we didn't know what to do. That's how great it was. It was a great event, from the parents that were there to the high schoolers that were there, the dancers from all the high schools that were participating. And I think Mr. and Mrs. Serhiel Sarata deserve something that, what they have done to bring the Down Syndrome program here to train and educate our parents that have these children, is just a remarkable thing what they did. And I want to congratulate you, Mr. Rendon, your staff, the parents, and Mr. Sarata, really, for what they have done and shown to BISD. Thank you.
Absolutely. You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Powers. Any other comments from the board? Not moving along to item four, Depository to your Extension, Texas State Bank. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo, members of the board. As you're well aware of, that we have to have a place to keep our money. It's called Bank Depository, and it's going to be up in, this particular contract's going to be up in June 30. And we can either extend it or bid it out. We're in the first of a two-year on the actual bid, and we have the opportunity to extend it two more years. But to tell you more about it and to be able to answer some questions, Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, board members, Dr. Escobedo. We decided that we bring it to you early so that in case, you know, you have an action item, there's some disagreement, then we can still have time to rebid. But let me tell you, we're very, very happy with the services that have been provided to us by Texas State Bank. During the times when interest rates were low, we had the fortune or opportunity to invest our money in CDs with the state bank, and they were way above everything else that was out there. We have excellent collateral. For every dollar we have there, they put up a $1.10 collateral. There's absolutely no cost to the district. They're very gracious in helping us, because we have various accounts. So, from the administrative area, we're very pleased with the service, and we would like to extend the contract for two additional years. It is required, or is allowed, let me say, it is allowed by the Texas Education Code for two additional years.
Mr. Sanchez, any comments, questions for the board?
What comment?
Mr. Lehman.
I just want to clarify, two years ago, that's one, did we bid out, or we renewed them two years ago?
No, we bid it out.
We bid it out?
Yes, sir.
Anything else from the board? If not, we move along to B, Standing Board Agenda Items. Six, Board Calendars. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo. You have the board calendar for this month in your packet. We want to bring out some of the things that are, I think, very important. This coming Saturday, we have our annual BISD Spelling Bee at Perkins Middle School. If you have an opportunity to attend, please do so. We also have the BISD All-City Bank Clinic and Concert at 7:00 PM at Lopez High School. If you have an opportunity to go, please attend. We, depending on this week, this coming week, events concerning possible visitation of other high schools for the purpose of finalizing the selection of an architect. Some of next week's calendar might change. I'll let you know. I'm not real sure until we finalize everything that we need to do. However, I do want to point out one thing, the TMEA convention in San Antonio for our musicians, the band people did an excellent job. The band students are going to be out there playing the best in the state. So, I'll be going up there on the 16th and 17th, and the 17th is there, when they will be actually performing, and I will be there to see them perform. Don't forget that the week of the 19th, a very big week for us, is shower days, and we have Fiesta Proclorica at 7:00 PM on the 19th at the stadium. In case of bad weather, which we hope we will not have, we'll move it to the 20th. I know that's a board meeting day, but maybe we can get out of here early in the board meeting and go out there and see the proclorica. But it's scheduled to be on the 19th. nineteenth, and hopefully, we'll be there. And of course, you also see that that's a very important week for students. It's tox testing week. So we need for, for everybody to be aware of this. I'm sure our campuses are making everybody aware that this is a very important week, and, and let's make sure that everybody knows that this is very important, not only for the district, but for the students themselves. And of course, on the twenty-second, we do have early dismissal because of the Children's Parade that starts at two-thirty down Elizabeth Street, so I invite everybody to participate in the celebration of Chaur Days. And the twenty-third, we will not be having school, that's Friday, the twenty-third, we will not be having classes due to the fact of Chaur Days. And that is for this month, and I'll bring you up to date on March on the following.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Questions from the board? If not, moving on to item seven, Public Audience. The next on my agenda is a public comment period. This is time for citizens, staff, or students to provide their comments to the board. Statements and questions from the audience will not be permitted during other portions of our meeting, so please let us hear from you now, if you want your, to have your comments presented. To have your comments heard without your name and subject matter of your comments must appear in the signing sheet, which is located in the rear of the meeting room. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes to complete his or her comments. With all due courtesy, I will strictly enforce the time limit. If a group of people want to be heard on the same topic, the board asks that they designate a spokesperson to avoid needless repetition. The board has adopted rules to preclude the abuse of open form by, for example, anyone uselessly, uselessly repeating the same comment or complaint meeting after meeting. All participant, participants must understand that your comment, in my judgment, constitute a complaint against an employer officer. I will interrupt and ask you to stop and direct you to proceed with BISD's formal grievance procedures, be that DGBA, FNG, and GF Local. With those cautions in mind, we will not be glad to hear from general comments. Our first person is Ms. Dora Guzman, Campus Concerns, and I will respectfully remind you that if it is a complaint against an employee such as a principal or teacher, that I would suggest that you speak to our legal counsel, and we will, we will gladly hear, hear your complaint in executive session.
Good afternoon, Dr. Escobedo, Mr. Gonzalez, members of the board. As you can see, we are here as parents. We want to express our concern on certain things that have been happening on a campus. We have attempted to contact many of the board members as, as possible, and would like to thank those who have returned the call. In addition, there has been one board member that has not returned one single phone call. We have addressed many issues with the central office and want the board to know that we expect someone to be held responsible for what has been happening for the past three years. Faculty and staff have been run off campus, and many fear for their jobs. The school is being run by intimidation. We also feel that some board members are being used as personal and powerful weapon and as the main source of putting fear into the whole campus. The board needs to be used as checks and balance for the community, not to benefit themselves or family members. It is unfortunate that teachers, parents, and concerned individuals don't have anywhere to turn when you have a campus being run into the ground and jobs are being threatened. At this point, you cannot say no one told you. You have been made aware of the problem, and we will expect every board member to be held accountable. There is plenty of supporting documentation, and people are tired and ready to do whatever it takes to make necessary changes for the sake of our children at this campus. And we are also requesting that to be added for the next meeting, the board meeting and the agenda for the twentieth, to be able to address each topic in detail.
Don't know, Mr. President.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker, Francisco C. Fuentes, Concerns, there's no, there's no subject.
Good afternoon, President of the Board, Board Members, Superintendent, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Francisco C. Fuentes. I represent the school district employees. And one thing that I would like to let you know before I start my presentation is that we can learn a lot from the recipient of their word, because she said, "I was doing my job," and I hope that every person who works for the district will conduct themselves with that humbleness. Being humble is very important in today's society. She was very humble. She said, "I was doing my job." And that comes, that brings me back to my presentation that this administration are not doing their job due to the fact that you're going to set a precedent, as I understand, that was an employee who was caught right-handed leaving the bus somewhere, she's coming back to work, as I understand. I hope you're ready to give everyone else that you terminated in the past for leaving the buses unattended, you're going to bring them back, because they deserve the same treatment as this employee. You set a precedent that if this person comes back, because she's a friend of some administrator, you're going to have to bring the other one back, the one that you terminated, just for leaving the bus unattended. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is George Borrego, and there is no subject.
Dr. Escobedo, board members and administrators, the pen ran out of ink. I'm going to speak on behalf of Albert, he was unable to attend, he's going to go to another meeting. Then, when I change hats, I will let you know if I still have time. Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Gonzalez, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Alberto Alegria, the very proud president of AOB-E, twenty-two-hundred members strong. Ladies and gentlemen, I speak for the twenty-two-hundred members. When district employees sign on as members of the AOB-E TSTA NEA Association, they endorse and trust in the executive board members to do and say what is right for the students, employees, and citizens of this great city. Speakers at this podium sometimes mislead or misrepresent, and that has occurred many times, and even forget what they once represented. They have forgotten what unionism or association really means. In short, it translates into working together to accomplish a common goal that will benefit the whole community, and that has always been our focus. And that community includes our students, our administrators, our staff, and, and our employees. Therefore, AOB-E is the voice of the educators. It is apparent that this board will not recognize the voice of the majority in this community and return the elections back to May. Short changes, it shortchanges the newly elected members and presents members to do less time on the board and allows others to overstay their agreement when they ran for the school board. School board members in favor of keeping the elections in November have led us on the wrong path after reassurance that if the elections in November were more expensive to the school district, they would return them back to May. In BISD, students and employers are required to follow campus rules and district policies. Board members, members also have policies and agreements that they must follow. However, some board members feel they are above these rules and policies. Fact, at no time has AOB-E ever ridiculed the voters of this community, because there were differences in opinion as to when the school elections should be held. What AOB-E has advocated for is that elections be held in May, because it simplifies the I lost my place. The school district allows voters to concentrate their efforts in school board and city elections versus partisan state and national elections. We at AOB-E encourage registered voters to exercise their freedom to elect. However, AOB-E will not support anyone whose intention is to spend taxpayers' money irresponsibly, and AOB-E will not support anyone who breaks their promise to make this district a better educational institution. The district recently approved to hold employees responsible for loss of any type of educational equipment and also be held responsible for payment of that equipment. We at AOB-E concur with the district to a certain level. We believe that all employees should be responsible and accountable for equipment assigned or checked out. However, the district must be more sensitive to their harsh stance and set realistic parameters that allow the employee a safety net for certain circumstances. We at AOB-E will be attending the next policy meeting to assist the district in reaching an agreement that the district and the employees can also agree to. We look forward to working with you. Now, I'm George Borrego. Campus administrators have been a little slow, not all campuses, but some campuses have been a little slow in getting the Padas waiver to the employees. There were some that were put in the files today, and the deadline is tomorrow. We hope that that deadline is a flexible deadline, because the Padas waiver is going to be a way that is going to allow our principals and our assistant principals to concentrate on, on instructional strategies.
Fifteen seconds, sir.
And walkthroughs, as opposed to doing the full-fledged observation. And the Padas waiver now allows it once every four years. I didn't finish, but I'll be back. Thank you.
Moving on to item eight, Closed Meeting as Pursued, Texas Government Code, Section 551.074 and 551.082. Board now goes to closed session. The board reconvenes after closed session. Moving on to item nine, Board Action Level Three Grievance, Reynaldo Garnett, numbered zero-zero-seven dash zero-six dash zero-seven. I'm going to make a motion to uphold Level Two, as discussed in executive session. Do I have a second? The motion dies for lack of second.
Mr. President, let the record reflect that I recuse myself from closed session and did not deliberate.
Thank you very much, Mr. Powers, so noted. Moving on to item nine, Consent Agenda, General Function. I have received a list from my colleagues indicating that there is no need for discussion or deliberation on the following agenda items. On A, recommend approval of following general function items, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, under B, recommend approval of following payments, eighteen. C, recommend approval of following budget amendments, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. Under D, recommend approval of following contracts or agreements, twenty-three. Under E, recommend approval of following RFPs, twenty-four. And under ten, Closed Meeting, Eight Personnel Matters, twenty-five, twenty-six. Well, they're all the consent agenda. Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three. Thirty-four is under consent agenda. We will not discuss it. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move, sir.
Motion by Mr. Aguilar, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Powers, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Under D, recommend the following contracts or agreements, number twenty-two, recommend approval of resolution number one-five-dash-zero-six-zero-seven, to extend the current depository contract with Texas State Bank for one, two-year term, beginning July one, two thousand and seven, and ending June thirty, two thousand and nine. Do I have a motion to approve the item as read?
Move.
Motion by Mr. Powers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Aguilar. Discussion.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry, second by Mr. Colunga. No, no offense to either one of you gentlemen. Discussion, Mr. Aguilar.
Oh, one of the things that I wanted to hear was that, what Mr. Lehman asked during the presentation, that we bid out this contract two years ago. The thing I'm concerned about is, yes, that was two years ago, but in doing so, we've always been talking about that we should review this every time it comes up to, for contract. How do we know is this the best service we have in, in our community? And let me tell you, Dr. Escobedo, I don't, I don't bank with any of the banks. Mine, for forty-one years, I'll be with a credit union. So to me, doesn't make any difference what bank gets it. What I'm saying is, do we do, go out there and solicit for the best service? And that is my concern that I have with this, the way this stated here, as an extension. And I heard that the administration was very pleased with it, but that was my concern about. Is it the best service out there in the community?
Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo, Mr. Aguilar, members of the board. We reviewed it, and, and administration, we're very happy with Texas State Bank. They have not done anything that, they cover us very well. If we ever don't have enough time to go make a deposit, they'll take care of it. They won't charge us for the overdrafts, they won't do anything. They've given us outstanding service, they provided us, they pay us very well on, on our, on our rates, when we, the money we have regardless. They take care of us, of course, and, and everybody knows they don't make a whole lot of money with us, because every time we put money in there, they have to back it up by a dollar and ten cents for every dollar we put in. They have to back it up, and that's any bank that would even solicit this contract. The purpose of bringing this is, we have the opportunity to extend it for two years, which, this is strictly an option for you all. A lot of districts like to do it, it gives it four years of continuity. You get two, this is why the state allows you to go with two. The reason I brought it up this early is, why did you bring it up in February, it's not due to June thirtieth? Because if it's, if you, if you're not willing to extend, we have plenty of time to go out for bids. That's why we brought it up this early. I hate to bring it up to you in May and say, well, we don't even have time to go bid, you already made up your mind. This is giving you the opportunity to ask the question. Are we happy with the bank? Absolutely. And I'm going to sit, sit here, we would be happy with another bank, probably so. But this, you know, all of our accounts are set up, our checks are made, everything is done. It gives you four years continuity, and this is why the state allows you to extend two more years. The purpose of, of the two years is, say, if you're not happy, you're not stuck with more than two years with anybody. But if you're happy, you have the opportunity to go two more years and make it four. So that's the whole thing in a nutshell. Our recommendation, from our end of it, we're content, we're happy, we have no problems with Texas State Bank. And that doesn't mean that I'm putting down any other bank in this community, because I think they're all good, but it serves to give us the continuity for four years of, of banking with one bank and then bidding it out again. And like I say, there's not too much as far as people making money with us, because they have to back us up a hundred percent. They can't reinvest our money. That's the whole thing in a nutshell.
Thank you, sir.
You said they don't charge us for overdrafts. Do we have overdrafts?
Yes, we do.
Okay, we'll talk about that, we'll talk about that later. Mr. Cortez?
I, I wanted to just get more familiar with, with exactly the process that, I mean, besides BISD having its money in their banks, is, is there any kind of profit in it for the district as far as like, besides the CDs that Mr. Sanchez talked about? I mean, do they, do they pay, like, some of, some accounts, like commercial market accounts, whatever they have, a certain percentage for having the funds in there? Would it benefit, you know, one bank over another bank? I mean, a district this size, it just seems that with the amount of money that BISD has, I wonder if, if putting it out for bid is the best thing? Is there, is there another bank in the city that can offer a, a more attractive offer that, that would be more suitable to a district this size with the amount of money it has?
I'll ask Mr. Sanchez to answer that, because that, those are, those are good questions, but it, it's a tight situation on banking with BISD.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Board members, at the time that we did the evaluation, the only deciding factor, none of the proposals charged the district any pennies, or, you know, they're basically all offer the same services, but at that time, interest rates was very low, and they were the only ones who sort of told us, you know, we are going to pay you at a, a interest rate above everybody else, and sure enough. So at that point in time, that was the best available place. Even, even the pools were not, were not offering the interest return on our investments as they were. And through time, over the last two years, they're still a little bit above all the other pools and all the variety that, that we're allowed to invest in, have a diversified portfolio. So, so, you know, we, we're still very happy, and that was the only deciding factor. So when you look at banks, it says, well, do they, is Georgia for an overdraft? How do we get a overdraft? Well, if you know me, you know, I'll wait till the very last minute, till, you know, I, I want my money earned. If it's earning interest somewhere else that, that I think is earning a little bit better, I may not make that timely transfer, you know, at two o'clock, or, or one, one fifty-nine, or whatever the case may be, so that, but, but they're, they're real good, because they know we're going to cover the very next day. And those are some of the occasions that, when you say, well, they, they cover, yes, they cover. They're real good also about working with employees who have accounts with the bank and helping, helping them. So in, in terms of service, in terms of, of what they've done, if we go out for bid, what, what is going to be the deciding factor? Well, all of them, like I said, is basically going to give you the same service for free. Well, all of them, like I said, is basically going to give you the same service for free to the district. So what can they do in terms of guarantees, in terms of return on your investment, if you invest with the bank? That's what it boils down to. The rest of it, you know, is cost for overdrafts, zero. Stop payment, zero. No fees for this, no fees for that. And by the way, this, the bid for this is very specific. You cannot change, it's a document that's produced by DEA, and, I mean, it's all written out for you. We don't, we don't have to count on our purchasing department to write the bid. This is one of the very, very specific procedures that we have in DEA, and we copy it word for word, because that's the way it is. And as Mr. Gonzalez alluded to, you're allowed to be with a bank four years. You can give them a one-year contract four times, or you can give one contract for two years, which is what we did, and now we're at the end of our second year, and we're asking that we renew it for an additional two years, which would be the maximum of four years.
Without having to go out for bids, do we know right now what the return on investment would be on our-
Yes, we do. Right now, we're averaging anywhere between 538 and 540 interest rate of return.
But do we know what it would be for other banks? Without having to go out for bids?
Well, no, but we have a daily, we get a daily investment portfolio from, from the Federal Reserve Bank, we get all kinds of investments and pools, and we're comparing those interest rates to how we're doing. You know, not necessarily these banks, your local banks, but, but this is, this is what we, we keep the pulse, not as what the, because a bank here can pay you for your own small deposit, because it doesn't have to be collateralized, and you can get a high interest rate. You can go there and say, you know, I want to, I want to buy a $25,000 CD and get 6%. Yeah, because they don't have to put up any collateral. But when I go to the bank and say, I'm going to, I'm going to drop in $135 million that you bank, you're going to have to produce $1 plus 10% on top of that to cover that collateral. Every Tuesday and Fridays, we have what is called a rotation, so they can, they ask our permission if they want to substitute collateral. They have so much, you know, whatever security is backing it up, and anytime they want us to release collateral, they have to ask us for permission. So we do this twice a week, every Tuesday and Friday, because we can get cited by the auditors for not having adequate collateral. So for our dollars are guaranteed, not the $100,000 that the FDIC guarantees. This is $100,000 for the FDIC, plus a guarantee that the bank is $1.10 for every dollar that we have in investments with them.
Mr. Lehman?
Yes, I just wanted to, I guess, state that we're not obligated to invest in the bank as far as any outside monies, other than the checking account, so that's to answer your question. So I'm pretty sure that you hunt for the best dollar.
Definitely.
So, and my only question, and I do remember that we did bid it out, so that was my only question. If you feel that this is, now, counselor, I have a question for you. What about those that bank with, board members that might bank with the institution?
Other than just a simple banking account, unless you're doing some type of extensive business, I wouldn't say that that would be any conflict. Now, if you, if you do have large notes with it or something, then it may be a situation where it may be appropriate to recuse oneself.
Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. The key thing is what you said, Mr. Sanchez, that the interest rates fluctuates, and Texas State Bank stays on top of that and gives us that difference to us. So we came in at, like you were saying, back two years ago, low, now they're above five. So at least they're maintaining within the market, which is pretty good.
They've been good to us.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
Sure.
Mr. Cortez?
It just, I, I don't know, I personally feel that with the amount of money BISD has, I mean, I mean, this is, BISD is the crown jewel of all type of, you know, contracts that are awarded. It just seems to me that we would lose nothing by trying to see if there's a better offer on the table. You know, we would lose nothing if, at the end of the day, Texas State Bank comes out ahead, all the power to them, you know? But I just feel that it'd be wise of us to consider opening it up for other institutions to-
Mr. Gonzalez?
I just want my, I don't want anybody getting the idea that we have all our money in Texas State Bank. We don't. We have all our, most of our money in long-staffed liquidities, and we have, you know, if you see our investment reports over here, it tells you where our money is at. I don't want anybody leaving here with the impression that all of our money that we get goes into the banking system. As a matter of fact, we, all we do is, like Mr. Sanchez said, we just transfer money from where we needed to cover our payroll and to cover our things. So there's not really a whole lot of money, small amounts of money is in our bank, but most of the money is in, in other areas of investment that is approved by, so really, what we're looking at is basically checkings and things that they do on a daily basis concerning banking. It's not really, I don't want anybody thinking that we have hundreds of millions of dollars in the bank, because we really don't. It goes into other areas and then comes back to us as we withdraw to cover expenses. That's how it does.
Mr. Aguilar?
Just for information, how much do we have invested in that bank? I know Mr. Gonzalez mentioned it, so, you know.
For further information.
Sure, I'd be glad to.
As of September 30th, we had 118 million.
118.
116.9 million, I'm sorry.
Part of the money comes in from the state and-
Can we have overdrafts?
You have overdrafts? Yes, we do. And it's like Mr. Sanchez says, you know, you missed the deadline by a few minutes as far as transferring the money in, but somebody goes in and cashes their check, they honor it, and that's good.
If I may, if, if I may, if the maturity, you know, if you look at a CD and it has a maturity like on Friday, and payroll is Thursday, you know, there's one day there, and, you know, we all play the, the most beneficial game to the district, and if they can cover us, you know, I'll take that day.
Mr. Aguilar?
Would you like to take the board, how much money we spent a day?
A million dollars.
What you're talking about.
Any other questions, comments from the board? If not, I have a motion to second, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We now move to item 10, closed meetings pursuant to Texas Government Code, section 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, 551.082, and 551.04. The board reconvenes after closed session. Action, item C, real property. Do I have a motion? No, there was no motions necessary. Item number 35, consultation with attorney regarding pending or threatened litigation matters. Do I have a motion?
Mr. President?
Powers?
I move to authorize counsel in the amount, discuss in executive session for mediation of pending litigation, Mahia versus BISD.
This is motion on the table, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Aguilar, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 11, announcements. Item 38, next scheduled board meeting of the board trustees is on Tuesday, February 20, 2007, at the administration building at 5:30. Mr. Gonzalez, any other announcements? No? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Aguilar, second by Mr. Powers, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion, all opposed? Mr. Cortez? Okay, motion passes unanimously, this meeting is adjourned.